Oh, right, right. Well, that's what happens. For some people, you know, signs.
Did you hear? Yeah. Did you hear? No.
Trust me.
Yeah.
What the hell?
I don't think so.
That was a lot of time ago, so what the hell?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for tonight's Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting. Bear with me while I read over the meeting procedure. All persons in attendance at the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, PCBOA, meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn your cell phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disrupted persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by the Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicant to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her or their names and address for the record, and explain his, her, or their request. The PCBOA will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comments on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant. All comments are to be directed toward the PCBOA. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group of similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the PCBOA. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The PCBOA will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the PCBOA will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on the agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 PM. The PCBOA may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date or time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA, through the chair, may modify these procedures prior to meeting or an agenda item. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, first item we have is the Planning Commission and the approval of the minutes. Do we have any comments or questions on the minutes provided for the November 25, 2024 meeting?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the November 25, 2024 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mike. Do I have a second?
This is Larry. I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, I have a second by Larry. So Mike made a motion to approve the November 25, 2024 meeting minutes, seconded by Larry. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The meeting minutes have been approved. Moving on forward, we have the no business, no old business, and we'll go straight into new business. We have conditional use application six dash CU dash twenty-four by Fred and Lori McGregor. Lots one through five, block four, Akeley Industrial Gardens. Section twenty-eight, township one forty-one, range thirty-two, Akeley City near Eleventh Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel two nine point three nine point zero zero eight zero zero. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to operate a recreational vehicle camping area use. Okay, if we could, please, if we have the applicants here, you may come to the presenter's table. Good evening. If you could, please state your name and address for the record into the microphone.
My name is Lori McGregor. PO Box forty-eight, Akeley, Minnesota, five six four three three.
Okay, and you, sir?
Uh, Fred McGregor. Akeley, Minnesota, PO Box forty-eight.
Okay, do you have, um, any other address that we can add on there as well? Any physical address?
One eighty-five Crow Wing Lake Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Same for you, sir?
Same.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm not sure what we want to do.
It's okay. Well, if you'd like, I can go ahead and read for the record what we have in front of us, if that would be okay?
Perfect.
Okay, so in 2021, the applicants obtained a conditional use permit to operate a twenty-one-unit RV campground on the property. The CUP's tenth condition required that the first six conditions had to be met before the operating permit could be issued. Two years passed after the CUP's approval without documentation being submitted showing the first six conditions were met or an operating permit being obtained. So the ordinance has that two-year sunset clause on CUPs, which requires the use to legally commence within two years of the approval date. And an operating permit is required to legally commence. And so this led the staff to sending a letter because that operating permit was not purchased and used, and so that's why we're here today.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Perfect. All right. I did note that I saw that we have a few things that have changed, so if you want to at least visit with us about some of the changes or some of the things that have already taken place that you've been doing for the RV unit?
Well, we have a concrete slab that we did I think thirty by twenty-four.
Yep, I have twenty-eight by thirty-four.
Okay.
Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna be used for a toilet and a shower.
Okay.
And a sink.
And a sink, okay.
Sure, perfect. And so all of your units are up and running?
Yes.
Right.
Perfect. And all of them are in tier two? No, tier one was also placed into tier two, so they're all in one area, correct? And the tiers, okay? Do I have any questions from the board members?
Well, no, this, well, this is Ken. I, in reading over the information, the major, maybe the unsettled thing is, is the approval of a platform area by each campsite and a storage shed. And there's kind of a standard size we've used for storage sheds, like eight by six. You have any thoughts on what you thought, what you think would make a reasonable platform that should be allowed with each site?
I'm not sure what they'd be actually.
Like, would ten by fifteen be something reasonable?
I think it'd be, I think it'd be fifteen by twenty. I think that's what they have at Izzy's. At another campground.
You what? I'm sorry?
That's what he has at another campground.
A twenty by fifteen platform?
Yeah.
Okay. You also, I noticed in your application talked about, well, room for a picnic table, which could go on that, and a fire pit. Were you intending like a portable fire pit or a firmament or fire pit? What were your, what was your thinking?
Putting, uh, fire rings out.
A fire ring?
So portable.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
Fire rings.
Yep.
He has a stiff neck, so.
Okay.
It should sit on the other side.
This is Larry. In the original CUP, you had listed the platform or deck not to exceed a hundred and fifty square feet, which would be a ten by fifteen.
Okay.
Are we requesting a change in that, or are we okay with leaving that?
I don't know. I guess we can leave it.
Okay.
Do we have to come back to you guys then, if we change it?
Well, it does say each one will, does need a permit, so they will all have to be permitted.
Yeah, but that doesn't come to us. You would just go to the Environmental Services Office?
Yes.
Yeah, just, we're just narrowing in a size, basically.
Okay, well, we probably have fifteen by twenty then. Or does that mean we have to change everything? Is that the right size? We'll just leave it.
This is Tim. Eric, I have a question. For the six by eight sheds that they're requesting for each one of the sites, would the owners then have to get the permit for all of them and only one permit for all of them? Or would they have to get individual permits per site?
The latter.
Individual.
Individual, yeah.
So for every shed that's in there, you gotta get a permit from the county?
And that would apply also to the platform then, too? Okay, so. Is there a fee for that permit? Okay.
Chair?
Go ahead, Mike.
A question in regards to the conditions. When I look at number two, I believe it's item four, it says one decker platform up to X square feet. I wonder if we should strike that whole sentence because down below number nine, it covers both the decker platforms and the shed. And I think in the past, we've tried to keep them at a hundred and fifty square feet, so I would be in favor of of maintaining that consistency from past CUPs that we've done.
Mike, this can, I saw that too, because it comes also in number nine. But I think number nine, the key element is to have those, they gotta have a permit. Okay, so the number nine is directing?
Is needed, but drop that sentence up in number two where number four where it says one decker platform up to X square feet and footprint at each of the approved campsites. I think we can drop that. Isn't that a duplication of what's in nine and leave nine?
I believe it is, in my opinion, too. Eric, are you okay with that, striking the one?
I guess I'd like to ask Eric why he had a double. I looked at number two, is this is, this is what you can have. Okay, and oh, by the way, some of that stuff you need to have a permit, is number nine. It was two different directives. If, I don't, Eric, you could
Could look at it that way. I guess including it in number two was the intention of the second condition is to list all of the improvements that they've proposed and to say those are what we're allowing and not anything else because the ordinance says if you make any additions of a structure after the original CUP is granted, that requires an amendment, so that gives the county an opportunity to review that and make sure it's gonna be okay. Something that you wouldn't wanna
So leaving it in there would be appropriate.
Okay.
It covers it either way.
Yeah, that, or you could potentially strike number nine instead. I was trying to work to a degree with the prior conditions and make edits, so number nine could potentially be dropped.
So.
But it doesn't hurt to have it there. It's it really doesn't matter then?
Yeah.
Leave it in. In both?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the discussion is on a platform size?
Correct, yeah.
Size, um.
Yeah. This is Veronica speaking. Personally, I'm in favor of the hundred and fifty square feet. That's kind of generally what we've done in the past for most places. Most campers have, you know, fifteen by tens. I've not really been to any that has fifteen by twenties, but
I'm thinking that the size of that, and you got a picnic table on it, you don't have much room to move around to do anything. Just a comment.
Sure, yeah.
Myself, I'm okay with the twenty by fifteen request because we're far enough away from the lake.
Valid point, too.
And that, and the sites are seventy by forty-five, so I don't, I don't
Mike, are you, do you, are you open to that since they're from the lake?
I'm okay. I'm not gonna get hung up on that.
Sure, okay. Those are valid, valid points.
So we'll put three hundred square feet in, in both of those. Is that right?
That is correct.
Or do we want to specify the actual size, or use a square?
Not to exceed three hundred.
Square feet.
Okay, okay.
Before we move too much further, I'm gonna go ahead and open for public comment. Okay, go ahead and please come to the podium and state your name and address and write it on the log for me, please.
My name is Kristy Cath, and I'm here on behalf of the City of Akeley.
Okay, thank you.
My, do you want the city's address or my address?
Which would you prefer?
She's speaking for the city.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, the city's.
Twenty-five Broadway Street East.
Thank you.
Akeley, Minnesota, five six four three three.
Thank you.
Just want to start by saying the city's in no way opposed to the McGregor campground. However, we've, we are opposed to its operation last year. It was operating without licensure. It did not contain just RVs. It contained tents. It has no, had no restroom or shower facilities, and so those occupants were coming down to our campground, which is right there, and using our facilities and disrupting our campers, trying to use our docks. There didn't appear to be any posted rules or regulations, and things like are normal in campgrounds, like quiet times and stuff like that, were not being addressed, and it was very disruptive for our campers. The lack of facilities had some people using the woods, which is, was all noted by our police chief, and he had to get involved and address some of the issues. And so the city would just, is, once again, I want to state that the city is not opposed to the campground's operation. It takes, you know, it should take nothing away from our campground because they offer a very different facility. But I'm just requesting that if this CUP is granted, that it's somehow monitored and that all of their requirements are met prior to them being open for the 2025 season.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Could I ask a question? As a member of the public, can I go down and swim on that lakeshore?
You can use the public access, yes. You cannot
Can I go swimming in the lake?
Yep.
Public land?
Yep.
But I can't use your bathroom?
Our restroom facilities are for our campers and our shower facilities. If you're, if you're using, if you are a camper?
I'm just saying as, no, just driving in and swimming with the kids and I want to take them in and change them in the bathroom or use the bathroom.
There is a restroom facility that we maintain that is at the public access. Yes, you can use that.
Okay.
That is not the facilities that were being used. It is not a shower house.
Okay.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comments, I will close public comments. Okay, so, appears just maybe some things to look at next year for your operating permit, some quiet time, make sure your hours, quiet hours are being well established and utilized. Obviously, they can call the sheriff's office as well if there's any complaints. That's their, their duties as well. Bathroom facilities, I know that you're going to be proposing to put a bathroom in. Do you have some dates on that bathroom proposal? Are you looking at making, doing that in the spring? I mean, just curious?
In the spring.
In the spring?
Okay.
And were you aware of any of this information that you heard this evening? Had the, had the city vaguely brought it to your attention anyhow? Not until this evening?
Well, um, Mr. Hanson, the policeman came to our campground, and there was a couple that were staying there in a tent. They had been down at the Akeley City Campground paying, and then they came, I don't know if they got kicked out or what. Apparently, there's a communication problem with the city of Akeley. We've lived in the city of Akeley since nineteen seventy-nine, so.
It's okay, it's okay. I just want to just get information. I appreciate you sharing. I just want to make sure we've got information, but you're aware of the situation? You, you talked to your, the tenants then, and asked them not to utilize?
Yes, because Mr. Hanson sort of told us to get rid of these people.
Well, as long as they were just told not to utilize wherever, they weren't supposed to.
We had asked, we had asked the other, the people who were in RVs, and they said they didn't notice
Okay.
hear anything or so.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that you're aware of the situation and that you've taken care of it. Thank you, perfect. And you have plans for the bathroom in the future, in the spring?
Yes.
Perfect. Do you have any other questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
You, you do have a shower bathroom in your plan.
Yes.
When do you think you might build it?
Well, we're hoping in the spring.
I'm sorry?
In the spring.
Oh, okay.
But we don't want people with tents there.
Yeah, okay.
We never charged these people. They needed help.
I think.
All right, well, so I'd like to go ahead and move forward with some of these conditions and review them if it's all right with you, okay? Very similar to what you had in the previous CUP. And condition number one, the conditional use permit is for the operation of the entire premises as one recreational vehicle camping area venture. As such, any land that through subdivision or addition to the property to which the CUP is granted is added or subtracted is, are, are not granted or allowed the right to operate in accordance with the CUP without first applying for or obtaining the necessary CUP from the county. So nothing has changed for number one. Number two, the CUP authorizes only the following improvements to be located on the property as described in the CUP application and shown on the CUP application site plan. You have, like we discussed, the twenty-one recreational vehicle camping sites approved to be placed in tier two in the location shown in the application site plan sketch. Each site plan must be provided with electrical service with and city of Akeley water and sewer service and be forty-five wide by seventy long in a trapezoid shape as shown on the site plan. A twenty-eight by thirty-four by fourteen by forty-five wide seventy long trapezoid shape area shown on the site plan. You have a twenty-four by thirty-four fourteen combination covered guest shelter shower house structure to be located on the property as shown on the CUP application site plan. That's the shower house that we're talking about that's going to be built in the spring, correct? Okay, perfect. And then number three, one accessory structure shed up to six by eight and footprint at each of the approved twenty-one campsites. We discussed those six by eight sheds. And one decker platform up to three hundred square feet and footprint at each of the approved twenty-one campsites. And one eight by ten footprint shed for water pipe housing located next to the electrical meters that service the campground. That sounds all correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Number three, this camping area shall only operate from April first to November first. We, that had changed, correct? So that is correct now? Perfect. Of each year. Quiet hours are 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM and are to be kept and enforced by the camping owners. Number five, the sole allowed driveway access road into the property is the existing driveway located in the southwest corner of the property and in the area shown on the application site plan.
Eric, it updated. You could read it off.
Perfect, perfect. Number six, all twenty-one campsites, the proposed shower house bathroom structure and other structures using water or generating sewage must be properly connected to the city's water, correct? And it already is. They're already all finished. Yes. And number seven, only low-level solar-powered downlighting is allowed to be used on the property for outdoor artificial lighting. Number eight, vehicle and parking areas are to be on the property only. Number nine, one decker platform not to exceed three hundred square feet in the area, and one six by eight shed are allowed to be located on each campsite with land use permit. And number 10, the use allowed under this conditional use permit must legally commence by obtaining an operating permit within two years of the date of this conditional use was approved, or the conditional use permit shall be automatically deemed null and void. Any questions? Now, I heard you mentioned the, you kind of questioned the land use permits for the sheds and the decks. That's gonna be regardless, whether you had a RV site or not. Because you're in shoreland, that's what you have to do. Anytime anybody wants a deck or a shed, they have to get a permit, okay? And you still do that through the environmental service. We are just basically limiting that to each little campsite and one shed per campsite. Otherwise, sometimes they would have three or four, that sort of thing. Okay? Any other questions?
So in two years, we have to do ten again?
Um, and two years, um, no, once you do it one time, don't, don't wait two years. Get your operating permit, you know, by the end of this year, if you can, you know, just get it done. Get it sent in right away. Don't wait. Get, you know, when you get that letter, that decision letter from the Environmental Services Office, it tells you exactly your next steps that you have to do. Highlight them, mark them off, make sure you do it. Do it right away. Don't wait till the deadline. Send it in, get it done. Yeah, that would be the best. Yeah, that would be the best suggestion. So we do have another question?
Yeah, this is Tim. Did we talk a reason why it must be solar powered lighting? Can they get, can they get low level electric lighting? What if there's lighting off a camper?
I think that is something that came from the original CUP three years ago. Why it was solar, I don't remember.
Right. Do you want it to stay that way?
I think we should probably have lighter.
Yeah.
From the campers.
Could we change that? We might have to change that.
I notice they have a lot of lights.
Just have low level powered, not solar.
Not solar, mhm.
Okay, that sounds.
I thought it's a good idea.
Yeah, I just thought it was, that was what you.
Keep the down lighting part too.
Yeah, but keep the down lighting, but yeah. Perfect.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to recommend to the county board that the conditional use permit be approved with the 10 conditions that were listed previously and accept the staff's findings of fact.
This is Timothy. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval to the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners with the 10 conditions that we have stated. And second by Tim, and they are adopting the staff's findings of facts. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. Your application has been approved on our end for recommendation to the county board. So you'll go to the next level and then you'll receive a letter from environmental services office. Please be sure to follow through that decision letter. That way we're completely finished, okay? Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be the Board of Adjustment. Approval of the minutes. The approval of the November 25th, 2024 meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments or questions on the Board of Adjustment minutes?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to approve the November 25th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mike.
This is Larry. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the November 25th, 2024 meeting minutes for the Board of Adjustment from Mike, second by Larry. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The minutes have been approved. There's no old business, so we'll move straight into new business. Variance application 63-B-24 by Darren and Anna Christensen, part of government lot four, section nine, township 141, range 34, Lake Emma Township on Pecoral Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 16.09.02000 and 16.09.02100. The applicants are requesting the after the fact variance from section 702 of the shoreline management ordinance for a lakeward expansion of a nonconforming structure that would make the structure more nonconforming in its ordinary high watermark setback. Do we have the applicants available here? Okay, thank you. If you please come to the presenter's table. State your name and address for the record. And then give us a description of your request, please.
Darren Christensen, 6056 170th Avenue, Southeast, Walcott, North Dakota, 58077.
Thank you, Darren. And?
Anna Christensen, 6056 170th Avenue, Southeast, Walcott, North Dakota, 58077.
Okay, thank you. And if you could, go ahead with your request, please.
I'm requesting to add this porch. We took off our other screen porch and deck that was existing when we bought the property. It was getting dangerous, rotting out. I'm not sure how long I had been there. But the porch and the deck were both getting rotten, boards, replacing boards. It was getting dangerous, not, not sturdy, basically. And the existing screen porch and deck was not handicapped accessible at all. My mother-in-law, Anna's mom, uses a walker to get around. And she likes to come visit and spend time at the lake, but she can't. All she can do is sit in the cabin because of the hills. She can't go down the hill. And she can just sit in the cabin and look out, basically. So adding this on at the same level will get her, be able to get out on the porch and be able to look out on the lake also. So that's the main reasons why we decided to add this on.
Okay, thank you very much. When did you purchase the property?
Do you remember when it was? I had it all when I did all this.
July 2020?
Yes, that sounds right. I was going to say about four years ago, so yes.
I asked when they purchased the property, is July 24th of 2020?
2020.
Correct.
This is Tim. I have a question. Why did you build it without a permit?
Yeah, I shouldn't have.
That's not the answer.
I shouldn't have, yeah. I started it and yeah, I shouldn't, I should have got a permit. I agree, yep.
Speak to the microphone.
Yep, I should have got a permit. Yeah, that's my fault. I agree. That's, I should have got a permit to do it, yes.
Why didn't you?
There's, there's, there's no, I didn't. I got, I got, got to the end of the season and I decided to start on it. And it went along a lot faster than I thought it was going to. And I, yes, I should have got a permit ahead of time. So that's completely my fault. And I paid the extra fees, what I have to pay, and I take full responsibility on that part.
So this is Veronica speaking. You were aware you needed a permit? And you just failed to get it because you were in a rush?
Pretty much, yes. I knew I needed a permit, yep, yep. Yep, not gonna, not gonna make up that I didn't.
Okay, well, before we go any further, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. And seeing no public comment, I will close public comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mike?
The exist, what was there before you tore it down was the porch was eight by 16 feet.
Yep, yep.
And the deck was 12 by 16. Is that correct?
Correct, I believe so, yep, yep.
And the new addition or the, what you built here now is 26 by 24?
With the overhangs, yep, yep. The existing screen porch had a probably a four foot overhang, which they didn't have in the county documents or whatever. So if you go by the overhang, I didn't realize the overhang came into the measurements of the structure. So the old porch was probably eight by 16, so it would have been probably 12 by 16 because that overhang probably four feet over the existing deck as well. But yeah, but yeah, basically, yes, you are correct.
This is Mike. To even replace what was there required a permit, which, which I believe, if you would have came in and asked to replace what was existing, it could have been done by permit.
Right.
Now we're dealing with a couple of things. One, an expansion and movement into the shore impact zone on a fairly steep slope and a larger overall structure.
Correct.
Which is problematic in my mind.
What, I guess what's problematic about it?
It's an expansion, which I don't believe this board would have probably looked at favorably if asked because of the impact into the shore impact zone, moving into there, plus the slope and the potential for effect on the lake because of the additional runoff and just the lay of the land.
I guess what additional runoff do you get? I mean, maybe can explain that to me more.
Well, now you've got an expanded porch and deck area, more coverage than what you had previously. So there's additional moisture coming down off that roof and being directed somewhere. And it's all on a steep slope. So it looks to me that everything's going to be going down to the lake. That's problematic. Because what we're here for is to protect the quality of the lake.
I am, yep, I understand that completely. I can put gutters on and go into a pipe and divert it some way, you know? That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be hard to do. So then you wouldn't have any runoff going down the hill.
Those are all the questions that should have been asked before this was built.
I agree. I understand.
This is Veronica speaking. Eric, I have a question. If, would the applicants have the opportunity to rebuild, since they've already removed the deck that they had and the porch that they had? Could they, if this gets denied, would they have that opportunity to replace what they had? Or do they have to completely start over with a different variance?
That's something we'd have to probably confer with legal counsel on before taking a position, just given the fact.
It's gone, right?
It's gone. And we have some records of what was there, but whether that would be enough to allow that, I don't know.
Right, okay, that's what I was concerned. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah. This is Veronica again speaking. Yeah, this is one of those difficult situations, Mr. Christensen, is that, like my colleague said, you're, you've started something that you knew you needed a permit for. And you know, you may not have known that going forward, lakeward, you know, there's rules and regulations that we adhere to, especially when it comes into the shore impact zone. There's five questions that we have to ask, answer affirmatively when we do grant such a variance request when it comes forth to us, you know, in the beginning instead of after the fact wise. Some of these things that we do consider would be the, what they, what they do with the the downpour, you know, the stormwater management, the effect that it has on the lake and the effect that it has on the shore, especially because it's encroaching into the shore impact zone. I personally, myself, also have a problem approving such a request because you are, that puts you at 45 feet from the ordinary high watermark when your cabin itself is 66 and 68 feet. You have, you have room on the sides of your cabin and the back of your cabin that you can make these additions to that would most likely, you know, be favorable and not forward of the lake. So I'm not in favor of approving the application either.
Okay, I went out the same distance as the existing deck was.
You went out further.
Besides the overhang, yeah.
Correct, you went out further than what existed was.
I could take the overhang off, I guess.
Right. Well, at this time, because you took everything off without contacting the environmental services office, you don't get anything at this time until they contact legal counsel and see what you could possibly put back if this gets denied. So unfortunately, that was a big, a big mistake that was made. So, but at this time, I am not comfortable moving forward either because adding this 28 by 22 lakeward addition to the cabin, you know, encourages 21 feet towards the ordinary high watermark. And you're already the closest one in that area of all of the, all of the houses there.
Nope, nope, that first one is a lot closer than I am. That first one that they just built.
Okay, well, even with this additions, putting you close as well. So, and judging, you know, at the aerial footage, I thought this was one of the closest ones.
Yeah, I'll have to go around the whole lake and take a bunch of measurements, I guess, and report back to you guys on everything.
Well, at this time, I'm not looking at approving the application as there are options that you have that you can build on the side. You can build, you know, around the back.
I can go around the whole lake and take, I'll take measurements of everything that's on there.
You can, but that's enough.
Everything's had permits and everything, so.
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, this board is dealing with the application in front of it, not anything else that is going on currently or in the past on this particular lake. So we'd like to keep the discussion to this application.
I understand, yes.
Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Eric, one more time. They could, by permit, rebuild the 20 by, or 16 by eight foot covered deck or covered structure, screened in porch or whatever. And they could rebuild the deck that was there, which was 16 by.
12.
12 feet, if I recall.
The ordinance would allow that had they come in and requested permit to do so before tearing it off and building what they have built.
Okay.
So as I mentioned earlier, I would have to confer with our attorney on whether that would be possible now, given the amount of time that's passed since they tore it off. And the, one of the legal things that they look at is if the landowner voluntarily discontinued the nonconformity, then they've.
And, and there's no record from the assessor or anything as to what was actually, actually there before then? There's no pictures?
No photos. What we have is the field card drawing that was in the staff report.
That's right.
What you have is what's in the staff report, the field, yes.
Okay.
The field card drawing.
We got pictures of when we bought the property and everything. Shows the deck and everything on there. Said I could, I could.
That would be, that would be wise for you to take to the environmental services office if this does get denied, so that maybe you can replace what you had. Again, they'll have to contact, visit with you and visit with legal counsel to see what could be done. But retain those, retain those.
I could mitigate the water runoff by gutters and, and into a, into a pipe and divert it wherever I needed to. That wouldn't be a problem.
I appreciate your efforts now. I wish those efforts would have been in place prior. Okay, anyone prepared to make a motion?
This is Timothy. I'll make a motion to deny the application except the staff's findings of facts.
Thank you, Timothy. Anyone have a second?
This is Mike. I second.
Okay, we have a motion from Timothy to deny the application and adopt the staff's findings of fact, second by motion. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The application has been denied. You'll be receiving a decision letter from the environmental services office. Like I said, please retain all the information that you have previously that you've already discussed. And you can talk to them about what your options might be. Okay?
All righty.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is application 64-B-24 by James and Denise Hawes. Government lot 11, section 16, township 140, range 33, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake. Parcel 21.16.03300. Applicants are requesting after the fact variances from part one, section 502.2 of the shoreline management ordinance for dwelling two platforms and a deck that are located within the 100-foot ordinary high watermark setback structure. And part two, sections 502.2 and 801.3 of the shoreline management ordinance for a subsurface sewage treatment system located within the 100-foot, 50-foot ordinary high watermark setback. And do we have the applicants here? Perfect. Please come to the presenter's table, state your name and address for the record.
James Hawes, 19556 Idlewise Drive, Island.
Denise Hawes, also 19556 Idlewise Drive, Nevis, Minnesota, 56467.
Okay, thank you very much. And go ahead and proceed with the request. I know we did not go to the lot views. That was.
And that's, I guess, one of my first questions is, oh, why are you smiling? Are you planning on in January or not? I didn't know because I have a court case behind me. I guess a question I had is what do you guys consider safe? And what do I have to do for you guys to view the property?
Great, great. I appreciate that because that's exactly what we will cover tonight. Things that you can do to have it prepared for us so that we can see what we need to see. So, anybody have any comments or questions that they'd like to see if this is table?
This is Mike. A couple of things. First, safe passage. Based on previous things I've read, there are springs and stuff, so that also concerns me. But safe passage out there would be one if we were expected to see it here, this time of year. But equally as important as getting out there, to me, is then being able
as important as getting out there, to me, is then being able to see what's necess, what we have to base our decision on. If we can't see anything because it's snow-covered, that would not be an adequate site view for me to be able to make a, a decision on, on what we should do with this particular application. You had mentioned a court case. When I review the dates on stuff, this has been going on, this violation, since two thousand twelve, documented?
Uh, probably before that.
Okay. My point is, at least twelve years, and now twelve years into this, to ask this board to hurry a decision, I won't hurry a decision unless I can see what I'm voting on. And so, it could be prob, it could be problematic, whether it's in January or February. I don't know what, what point there won't be snow cover and we can adequately see what's there, how the drainage is, and everything else. So, that's my personal opinion.
Do you, uh, uh, when I came back from Arizona ten days ago, I had six inches ice out there. I took a side-by-side across. I took a CRV across yesterday. Uh, I measured the ice this afternoon. We have anywhere between nine and a half and eleven inches ice. I, I guess what I need to know, are you guys gonna take full pickups over, or should I get enough side-by-sides for you? Uh, I drive a CRV. It's an all-wheel drive. There is no driveway on the island. You'll have to walk up or have a four-wheel drive to get up onto the island. So, and then, like, as far as what you want to see, I'll have the decks all cleaned out, and, uh, go ahead.
It's, it's more than the deck. It's actually the shoreline, the vegetation. That will be critical, and at least in my mind, on any kind of decision we make, is being able to see what effects, it's been there for quite some time, what effects are there right now. Um, and, and without being able to see the vegetation.
If I may, we've provided many pictures in our application of the vegetation.
Do, so you guys are actually, what you're saying is, you really want to delay this thing to June or July or May when the vegetation's off?
It may be March. It may be April. I'm just saying, underneath snow cover, it would be difficult for me personally. I'm, I can't speak for the rest of the board.
This, this is Ken. That's the key element to me. Uh, we could always find ways possibly get out there. Uh, you've had the structure there for fifteen years, whatever. Um, it's pretty permanent. I would like to see it in its summer condition. I would say June to make a decision as to whether, um, uh, there should be anything done, even if we, if we do approve the variance. Is there any kind of runoff protection, shoreline buffering that we have to do? I wa, I want to see it vegetated. But I do have a couple of questions that I think I can, I want to ask. When did you purchase the property?
Uh, I believe it was nineteen ninety-four, ninety-four, ninety-five. It's somewhere in there.
So you owned that property for at least ten years before you did any construction at all on it?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and the only other question I have for you is, the ordinary high-water mark level was changed. Um, were you aware of that?
No. No.
And why, why not? I, I would assume that was pretty well published to people.
Well, when we, when I started thinking about building on the island, first off, I had to get power out there, and I found a way to do that. And then, I knew that I probably would have to do this out of pocket, so I had to do the work myself. Um, so, I knew where I wanted to put the house, was gonna be really pretty tight. So this is where the bone of contention is. Uh, I wrote a check in two thousand six, March twentieth of two thousand six, off my Alaska bank account, to have, and then I came down in April, and Laird Henson, who's passed now, and sadly, but he came out, him and I went out in April, and with a tape measure, we measured the, the peninsula in two spots. I just held a dummy end of the tape, and he went into the brush. I, he said I could build a thirty-two foot wide house there. I asked him if anything's changing. He said, no. The next year, I ran into him at L and M Fleet. He said, you better get in to get your permit. So I went and I got a plan and a septic tank permit, and I went up to Laird at the Environmental Service Office. I said, how much do I owe? He said a hundred bucks. And honestly, I didn't know if he was gonna, looking for a bribe or what, but I said, could I take a check? Could, will you take a check? He said, yes. I said, who, so then I knew it wasn't a bribe. So, he gave me the permit. I didn't ask him any questions. I started building on the island, uh, had a full-time job in Alaska, commuting down, doing whatever I could to get it up and running. Uh, and I moved in July of two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Scott came out about November or December of two thousand eleven, and verbally told me I was out of compliance. He never showed back up until twenty, December of two thousand twelve.
Can I, I, I can read all that. I had simple questions. Um, Laird was out there in April of two thousand six and told you you could build up to thirty-two feet.
Correct.
In October of that year, the ordinary high-water mark was changed on the lake.
Okay. I had no idea until two thousand twelve.
Um, there was no notification sent to the people that lived on that lake?
Not to my knowledge, not by the DNR.
Okay. I got the answer that I wanted.
So I feel like I got caught up in this transitional period, and to be honest with you, oh...
Okay, I got the answer. You said you were not aware that it had changed.
Okay.
And nobody told you about it when you came in for your permits for the septic system and for building, um, and identified the setbacks? There was no question or discussion about the ordinary high-water mark changing?
And, and the bottom line is, is there was nothing in my file, sadly. Uh, Laird didn't put anything in my file. Luckily, I kept my check that I sent down. Uh, Environmental Services wouldn't recognize the check, but they couldn't say what it was for.
Look at, I can read all that. I got the answer to the two questions I wanted. Okay.
Well, okay. So, uh, I tried, I've been trying to get it settled in two thousand twelve. They would not recognize my check. Then I go watch your meetings down in the basement.
I don't want, I don't need any, I know all that. I've read all that. I wanted two questions answered and the answer them.
Oh, okay. All right. I guess with my three minutes, I don't get my three minutes? Okay.
Timeout. And I'm logging in for the fact that, to approve a major structure like this, I'd like to see it in its summer condition.
I'm cool with that.
To, in order to rule on whether we should give you this variance.
We'll, we'll have to ask for a continuance, both the Environmental Services and us, for the court case to get pushed back. So, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, thank you, sir. This, I have a question for Eric. Typically in the past, when we have to go out to islands and such, what is the travel for the board members?
In the twenty years I've been in this position, I can only think of one island that we have ever had another variance application on, and the owner provided access in their boat and reviewed it during one of the summer months.
Okay. So if we push this off until June, you're going to be able to provide us access to your area by boat?
Absolutely. Yes.
Safe travels by boat? I prefer safe travels, too.
I was gonna put you in a sixteen-foot line on that six inches ice with a life jacket on.
Why, that'd make us flume up there.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, so, I, I agree with Ken as well. There was lots of good comments and information given and provided from the applicant, getting some documentation established and some timelines as well. Uh, myself personally, I'd like to see it, um, with all the, everything growing so that we can see the conditions of the lake and the...
I, I have a question, I guess, for Eric. I had to get a certificate of compliance on the septic tank. Does that, is there a timeline on that, or does this, after-the-fact variance, is that just table till then? Is there a timeline on the certificate of compliance? I just want to make sure that I'm not putting myself in a bad way.
The compliance inspection is valid for three years from the date it was completed.
Okay.
And then if the board is going, the board has to act on this no later than its February meeting due to statute that says they have to act on it within the maximum of a hundred and twenty days from when you applied.
Well, you supplied, you supplied us a, a form that we can fill out and get it to move down the line a little bit.
Correct. If you fill out that waiver form and submit it to us, then if we receive that before the board would take action, then we can wait until June or whatever.
Whenever.
When it's warm enough that we can access the, the island safely, and the board can see what they'd like to see.
Right. This is Veronica speaking. Do you want him to sign anything this evening? If it gets tabled for...
If they're willing to do that, I can do that.
Well, there was two different waivers. I need an explanation. You said we could sign this one or this one. There was like two choices. Something for a time certain where we'd do it in June, and sometime for eternity or something like that.
One is an indefinite time period extension. The other one, you can set a specific date by which you want the board to act on the application.
Which, you would give us that date?
Yeah, well, that's what we were discussing. June, June would be pretty, pretty reasonable as far as getting out to the water. I mean, I don't know that, I've not seen open water in June, but I haven't lived up here as long as everybody else, so. Does June seem satisfactory for everyone?
Yeah.
So then you could place June on, placing you on the June agenda, and then that way you would have a time for your court as well.
And then just to clarify, we don't need to fill anything else out for you in Environmental Services, correct, other than signing the waiver? I mean, our, our application is complete, and it will be held, held till June.
If you would complete that and submit that form, yes.
Correct, yes, yes. Do you want to sign one this evening? Do you want to sign it this evening so that you don't have to worry about doing anything else?
We, we don't have it with us.
I mean, he's, he can give you one.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right, then. Moving forward, tabling the application? Okay, so you want to make a...
Madam Chair, did you do public comment?
I, I believe I did. Um, but for the record, I can open public comment, and there's nobody in the audience. I can close public comment, but we're good to go.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we table this.
If I may, Mike.
Go ahead.
If we can have them fill out the form, then we can...
Oh, then make the motion after the form's filled out.
Okay.
I will pause.
This, this reminds me of something. An old-timer told me one time, whiskey's for drinking and water's to fight over. My God, my God, is that so true?
Well, it depends on whether you steal my whiskey or not.
And, and water has more values in different places.
Yeah. I'll take my fantasy football pick back with me. You want to pull the middle name, too?
That can be a real deal, too.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for signing that. Now, Mike.
Madam? Just for the board's understanding to document, they signed the waiver form and gave until July first of two thousand twenty-five for the board to act on the application.
Okay. Perfect.
This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we table this application and act on it prior to, put it on the agenda prior to July first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and this is Veronica. I second the motion. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. Your application is tabled. Thank you for signing the form, and we'll see you in June. Okay?
Or earlier.
Or earlier if possible, that's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a different stat for that. Yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Variance Application sixty-six dash B dash twenty-four by Eagle Bay Resort Association, part of government lots five and six, Section Fifteen, Township One Forty-One, Range Thirty-five, Ergo Township on Eagle Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero two point one five point zero zero three one zero. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section seven oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed structural alteration of a structure devoted to a non-conforming use. Um, Eagle Bay Resort, the applicant and Nathan Brand, the authorized agent, both said that they would not be present at the meeting, and we can go ahead and go forward with their application at this time. It is pretty straightforward. The application concerns proposed structural alteration to Cabin Nine on the property. The, the resort omnium use of the property is a non-conforming use, thus Section seven oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance applies, which prohibits structural alterations to a structure devoted to a non-conforming use. The application processed such structural alteration of this cabin in the form of installing the helical piers into the ground to support the south wall of the cabin. Five such piers are proposed to be installed. The applicant states that the piers will likely be placed to a depth of less than fifty feet. During our lot views, the, um, authorized agent pretty much gave us information on how those piers would be installed. Do we have any questions or concerns on this actual foundation?
The only issue I think that was raised had to do with, if you go down fifty feet, is there a possibility of affecting the, uh, the groundwater?
This is Mike. I would believe that's minimal based on that they're being screwed in, is, is what I understood. So there'll be very little disturbance and, and probably no voids of any kind, so.
And the fact that they're two hundred and seventy feet from the lake, et cetera, I don't, I don't see any reason.
Okay. And for the record, there's no one in the audience, but I'm gonna open for public comment and close public comment. And again, the septic on the property is compliant, and it also will not be affected. And let's see, the, the piers will not change the use of the property, will not have any negative visual impact. The, we talked about how far, during the lobby, we talked about how much they would set up, and he said only two of them would possibly stick out of the ground and not, they might have a cover over them, so. Okay? Any other questions?
No.
Anybody prepared to make a motion?
This is Ken. I'll make a motion that we approve Application sixty-six V twenty-four, and accept the staff's finding of fact.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Ken to approve the application, adopt the staff's findings of fact. Anyone have a second?
This is Larry. I'll second.
And a second by Larry. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The application is approved. Next item miscellaneous or communications?
I don't have much for the board. We will have a January meeting. We have one application so far and another one that's anticipated, and the application deadline is a couple of weeks out yet, so probably see some more. How many, I have no idea. weeks out yet, so, probably see some more, how many, I have no idea.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or? Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Larry, I move we adjourn.
This is Mike, I second.
Okay, Mike, or Larry made a motion to adjourn, Mike seconded, Mike, how do you vote?
Mike votes aye.
Larry?
Larry votes aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Tim?
Tim votes aye.
And this is Veronica, meeting adjourned, five to zero, I vote aye.
Good job.